Chairman of Lee County Board of Commissioners calls the meeting to order on this the 17th day of November 2008 to conduct all business which will be properly brought before the body. Our first order of business will be the invocation and then the pledge of allegiance. That's all stated.
We repower our heads in prayer. My gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and the freedom that we enjoy in living in this community where we have duly elected representatives to staff our legislative branch of the government. We ask our Father that you would bless the members of the Board of Commissioners and so direct their purposes and guide their deliberations that their thoughts, words, and actions in this meeting may be acceptable in your sight. We ask our Father that we note that this is the last scheduled meeting for the terms of Chairman Brown, Commissioner Lamond, and Commissioner Quigle. We ask that you bless them for their service to this community and be with them and guide them and crown their future endeavors with success. These things we ask in your holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and invisible with liberty and justice for all.
This is not on the agenda, but I want to do it at the beginning of the meeting. Then we will move further on in the approval of the agenda. At this time, I would like to call Dwayne Brinson to the podium and read a proclamation.
To you, a Presidential award presented to Dwayne Brinson, Tax Administrator, Lee County, North Carolina, in appreciation for your pioneering project to publish the Tax Times for the North Carolina Association of Assessing Officers, North Carolina Association of Assessing Officers dated November 13, 2008. I would tell you that this is a single award that is presented each year, and we are proud of Dwayne in his first year with us, being our tax administrator, that he wins this award. And I think he deserves a standing ovation.
May be seated. Dwayne, if you would, come up and I will again present you this award with our appreciation as a county and especially from the Board of Commissioners. And any comment that you'd like to make, you can go back to the podium and make it.
Just like to thank the Board for giving me this opportunity and, you know, hope to make Lee County proud, hope to make the Tax Office proud. Thank you again.
Do I have any additional agenda or changes to the agenda that you would like to make?
See, I'd like to add one on the new business request for endorsement of the Wicker School Project, the Historic Preservation Designation.
All right. Any other changes? Do I hear a motion that the agenda be approved as with this one addition?
No.
Although in favor say aye, any opposed say no. So ordered. Do I have any comments or questions about the consent agenda? If there are none, do I hear a motion that it be approved?
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
Although in favor say aye, any opposed say no. It is so ordered. We have a proclamation that was approved in that vote on the consent agenda concerning Farm City Week, and I've asked Mr. Pascal if he would read that proclamation and after that we will recognize suits and cardigan.
State of North Carolina, County of Lee, proclamation. Whereas the American farmer has literally helped feed and clothe the world by producing a bounty of agricultural products, and whereas rich agricultural resources contributed to the health and well-being of our country and to the strength of our economy, and whereas the growth and development of Lee County and the well-being of all its citizens are dependent upon cooperation and exchange between our rural and urban communities, and whereas the hard work and successful cooperation between rural and urban communities will continue to play a vital role in our future, and whereas the complexities of individuals, environments, and the divergence of their activities may lead to a widening gap of misunderstanding, and whereas misunderstanding must be eliminated if our American way of life is to endure, and whereas Farm City Week provides an unparalleled experience for farm and city people to become better acquainted. Now therefore, we do proclaim the period of November 21 through 27, 2008 to be Farm City Week and call upon citizens and rural and urban areas to acknowledge and celebrate the achievements of all those who, working together, produce and supply our community and nation with an abundance of agricultural products. We do further call upon all citizens of this county and city to participate to the limit of their capabilities in the joint visits, seminars, and civic and social events associated with the Farm City Week in the city of Sanford and Lee County. Robert H. Brown, Chairman of Lee County Board of Commissioners.
And this will be a joint proclamation from the city and county. The city will be presenting it their next week. I have someone here to speak.
Chairman Brown, County Commissioners, thank you for allowing us to be here with you today. My name is Bill Stone. I'm with the North Carolina Cooperative Extension and the Lee County 4-H. Today, as part of our kickoff of Farm City Week, we've got some young folks here with you today that is, one of them is going to tell you a little bit more about agriculture. That's going to be Caleb Thomas. He's with the Lee Senior FFA Chapter. And we've also got Stacy Neal, who is one of our Lee County 4-Hers in the Lemon Springs Horse Club. So at this time, I'm going to have Caleb come up here and speak with you.
Thank you, Bill.
Hey, how you doing? My name is Caleb Thomas. Like you said, I'm from Lee County High School, and I'd like to talk to y'all about Farm City Week. The U.S. only takes up about 7% of the world's landmass, but we provide 13% of the world's total food commodities. U.S. agriculture and agriculture business keep U.S. food the safest and most abundant in the world. On average, a family of four could eat around 5,000, 6,000 pounds of food a year. In North Carolina, our number-one industry is agriculture and agriculture business. These include food, fiber, and forestry. These fields provide around 3/4 of a million jobs and bring in 22% of $217 billion gross state product. In our society, many things are taken for granted, including the food. We live in a society where we have more than we can eat. We take for granted that our food is the most convenient, economical, and abundant in the world. We were eating better than some countries do today since the 1900s. We've had hot dogs and hamburgers since 1904, pre-sliced bread since 1930, McDonald's opened in 1940. We even had our first Swanson frozen TV dinners in 1954. Even though we've been eating well all these years, many Americans still don't know the real story behind the food industry, such as its origin, or how much a farmer has to provide to really make a living. In Farm City Week, we appreciate those and recognize those who provide all these commodities to our community, and I'd personally like to thank them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Stacy Neal. I'm from the Lemon Springs 4-H Horse Club of Lee County. I'm here to talk about the exciting things that are going to be going on during Farm City Week. There are going to be two contests that will highlight local youth and their artistic talent, and they are the 4-H Art Contest and the 4-H Photography Contest. In the art contest, elementary, middle, and high school students across the county will use brush and paint to create agriculturally themed art that will be on display during the night of the banquet. For the 4-H Photography Contest, entitled Agriculture Exposed, this will encourage young photographers to explore the outdoors and take shots of agriculture settings in Lee County. Each participant won or three photos and cash prizes will be awarded by the Sanford Herald. A new and exciting agriculture geo-cashing event will also take place this year. Participants will use their handheld GPS devices to find hidden goodies at local farms and agritourists on places in Lee County. This high-tech scavenger hunt is one that the whole family can get involved in. The event will kick off at the banquet on November 24 and end at the Extension Center on December 6. On November 24, the Farm City Bank will be held at the Lee County Extension Center. I'm sorry. But yeah, that's right. A social hour hosted by the Lee County ECA will begin at 5:30 with the banquet following shortly at 6 o'clock. The traditional meal of country ham, red-eye gravy, eggs, biscuits, and grit will be provided by the Lemon Springs Rural Tannin Club. Musician Lauren Poindexter will perform and promises to be a night of fun and fellowship celebrating the partnership between rural and urban communities. Advanced tickets are $8 and can be purchased by contacting the Extension Center. And last but not least, Farm City Week festivities will conclude on December 3 with the ladies' luncheon held at the McSwain Extension Center. Be sure to come and join us for a great meal and program. The ladies will even let the gentlemen join the lunch if they promise to behave. Thank you all for allowing me to speak with you today, and hopefully you will be able to enjoy it and will be able to join us for these enjoyable upcoming events.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I guess all of us are aware of the fact that food is readily available to us by looking around the room, and I don't see anyone who's malnourished. So I think it's proper that we recognize those who produce the food that we eat, and so many times, we don't know how blessed we are as a nation to live in the United States of America and, in particular, North Carolina and Lee County. So we appreciate this presentation. It gives us great honor to have passed this resolution, and we wish you well on your celebration of Farm City Week, and I, for one, will be there to get the country ham and red-eye Moving on now to the public comments section. Do we have anyone who signed up? No one signed up to speak today, so we'll move directly to new business. And I recognize Ms. Lisa Minner for her 2007-2008 financial statement presentation.
I would like to take this opportunity to present to you the county's financial position as of June 30, 2008. You should have each received copies of the financial statements in your package. We did this morning. An error was brought to my attention in the transmittal letter in the front section. There were a couple of lines missing somewhere between here and the auditor's office. The computer ate a couple of lines. So if you will leave me your financial statements, if you brought them back with you, I will, Ms. Hodges has brought the corrected pages to me, and I will change those out and get those back to you after the meeting, if possible. Today, I would like to discuss several different items with you. First of all, will be the general fund activity. We'll also go over the fund balance position of the county for the general fund, our debt position as of June 30. We'll review the single audit and grants portion. We'll go over the audit results, and then I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have. As far as general fund revenues go, our revenues and transfers totaled $61,459,000 for fiscal year ending June 30 of 2008. This represented an increase of 9.1% of the fiscal year 2007. That is partially attributable to the revaluation and the property tax rate adjustment that we had during the 2008 budget year. Our major revenue sources, of course, are property taxes at 56.7%, sales tax remained steady at 18.8% of our revenue, and intergovernmental revenues accounted for 13.8% of our total revenues for last fiscal year. The graph here, it's hard to see up there, demonstrates various areas, and you can see where we've had growth. Obviously, our largest growth was in property taxes, again, or add lawn taxes, again, related to the property revaluation and the tax rate adjustment. You'll see some growth in sales tax, and we also saw an increase in sales and services, which could be increased rates, although we did have a slowdown in environmental health last year. We still saw some growth there. Property tax revenues increased 8.7% over the fiscal year 2007. The tax base for fiscal year 2008 ended up being $4.6 billion. That represented an increase of 14.5% over the fiscal year 2007. Again, remember that that's the year where revaluation took effect. Overall, tax collections remain steady at 97%. If we exclude motor vehicles, we were at 98% or 86% for motor vehicles. As you can see, motor vehicles still tend to be a problem for collections. We are hoping that the House Bill 1779 will be implemented, which would allow the motor vehicles' taxes to be collected at the time the tax are renewed instead of a delayed time after that. However, if I remember correctly, I've heard that has been delayed a year already.
2011.
It was supposed to be implemented in 2010, and it's already been delayed to 2011. Collections did exceed budget for the year by $727,538. This is the top 10 taxpayer information. As you can see, wife remains the top taxpayer. In the back section of your financial statements, specifically on page 102, you will see a comparison of the current top 10 taxpayers to where we were nine years ago. At that point, wife was our number-three taxpayer, which, as you can see, we've experienced quite a bit of growth with wife, and it also should let you see how some of the others have shifted. Couple of weeks ago, I did this, drafted this presentation for the Finance Committee and was asked if we could get the breakdown of the assessed value between business, personal, property, and real value. I have that information that be passed out to you. As far as expenditures go, expenditures and transfers totaled $60,271,000 for the year. This represented an increase of 10% over fiscal year 2007, and we continue to have the majority of our expenditures go towards human services and education. The graph here will show you a lot of where that 10% increase went. The majority of the increases were related to education, debt service, and public safety over the fiscal year 2007. Education accounted for a total of 37.4% of our general fund budget, and figuring this number of debt service related to education is included in that amount. So 37.4% of our general fund budget goes to education for the community college and the county Board of Education, debt service related to those entities. Specifically, for the Lee County Board of Education, we zoned in them $13,502,000 for current expense. That is an increase of 6.6% over the fiscal year 2007. Capital outlay totaled $1.1 million. The increase there was partially funded through lottery funds this past year, and some of that was not spent by June 30 and was rolled over at the last meeting to this year to finish those projects. Debt service for the schools came to, for the Lee County schools, came to $5 million in last year's budget, bringing the total funds allocated to Lee County schools to $19.6 million, almost $19.7 million, or what accounts to 32.65% of our general fund expenditures, as an increase of 13.9% over the fiscal year 2007. For CCCC, current expense for the year totaled $2 million, just a little over $2 million. And current expense funds for the Civic Center totaled, remain the same, at $55,739. Capital outlay was $51,000, and debt service related to CCCC was $527,300, bringing the total to $2.6 million, which relates to a 4.4% of the general fund budget and an increase of 13.5% over the previous year. As you can see, our allocations to them did go up more than our overall expenditures did. Fund balance, which is always a major concern for us, as you can see, our fund balance did increase for the year, increased by $1.1 million, almost $1.2. However, $553,000 of that increase is attributable to the transfer of funds from the E911 fund balance, which was allowed by the state after they adjusted the way they would be collecting and charging for the E911 services. For the year, our available fund balance, which is what the state looks at, which is I've explained to the rest of you in the past, you cannot go in the financial statements and quote "find that number," but it's what the state calculates and compares us to for other counties. For June 30 of 2008, we were at 18.5%. So as you can see, while everything grew, our percentage still dropped as far as the percentage of our expenditures, our available fund balances, the percentage of our expenditures dropped from 18.7% to 18.5%. $10.9 million of our, as our available fund balance is of 630, 2008, which is an increase of $853,001 from fiscal year 2007. We are currently at 18.5% of our 2008 expenditures. If we look at that as a percentage of this current budget, we're at 17%. These numbers fall within the sub达到 range based on financial policies adopted by the 3, 2005, or made through 2005. However, we still fall well below the statewide average for our population group as of 630, 2007. The numbers for 630, 2008 will not be available until all the audit reports are received by the local government commission.
Lisa, do you have any idea how many counties actually hit that 24.3 mark?
No, sir, but I will find out and get that information out to each of you.
Thank you.
As far as our debt position, as of 630, 2008, our outstanding debt totaled $65.1 million. $10.6 million of that's general obligation bonds. We have two major COPs issues outstanding totaling $52.5 million. We have installment notes of $1.9 million outstanding. Our debt levels in relationship to our financial policies, when we look at is outstanding debt. We are at 1.4% of our total assessed value for the fiscal year 2008. 2% is our financial policy maximum, so we are under our maximum there. Actual debt service payments equal 12.1% of our general fund expenditures are maximum. According to our policy, it's 15%. Every year, as part of our audit, our single audit and grants portion is the auditors come in and review our state and federal funding and have to go through certain audit procedures for that. Grant funds managed by the county totaled $71.7 million this past year. DSS alone accounted for $65.9 million of that, almost $66 million of that. A portion, only a portion of that comes directly through our hands for the county. Portion received, it was $6.2 million. Vendor payments totaled $59.7 million. However, we play a large role in the eligibility determination for those funds that go directly to the vendors. That would represent Medicaid payments and food stamps that go directly to the vendors or to the participants. Programs audited this year were the WIC program, subsidized childcare program, Medicaid, food stamp, and what's not listed there, SSA was also looked at. We did have one finding, and that was detailed for you on page 9 and 10 of the separate compliance supplement that you received. Ms. Paula Hodges is here from Martin Starz &amp; Company and Martin Starz &amp; Associates, excuse me, who performs our audit, and I will let her come up and make any comments she has on the audit at this time.
Good afternoon. It's great to be back in Lee County, and we really appreciate the opportunity to serve as the county's auditors. Lisa has done a wonderful job sharing your financial results, so I really don't have a great deal to add to that, but I would like to...
Excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Are you going to refer to any of the slides that were presented?
No, sir, I am not.
Do any of the commissioners have any questions concerning any of the slides that you want to draw back up? If not, then I'm going to ask that the lights be turned back on. Okay, now we can see you.
All right. Great. I just want to take a few minutes to thank Lisa, the Finance Department, the management of Lee County, for their assistance during the audit process. We find them to be very prepared and cooperative, and I just want to say that they're the reason that the audit goes smooth. And as Lisa shared with you, our opinion, which is what you engage us to do, was unqualified. And what that means is that there were no areas in which we, as the auditors and the county, could not come to a consensus as it relates to the financial statements. Our audit standards require that we assess risks, and then we design audit procedures to address that risk assessment. And so we come in during our planning stages, and we look at your internal control systems. We also test federal and state grants. We don't issue an opinion on the internal control system, but we do test various systems, and we do test your federal and state grant awards, and all of that information can be found in your compliance package. So I don't have anything else to add to your financial results unless you have any questions for me, other than to say that the county continues to be in good financial condition.
Any questions or comments from any of the commissioners? Do you have any question, County Manager? We thank you very much, and it seemed like a comprehensive report, and we appreciate it, Lisa, for preparing this for us, and also we appreciate the fact that we are on firm footing as a county. And those figures were based on June 30, and I would remind the commissioners that we have spent a great deal of money since June 30. So don't jump to any conclusions if you think that we've got the extra money in the, in our control. Thank you very much.
Lisa, I do have a question on this, I think I was the one who requested this breakout on the real personal. Do we have a, some kind of a projected depreciation schedule for some of these? Like Wyeth has two hundred and nine million in personal property right now, but that will probably decrease. Do we, how will that affect our tax base? Do we have a depreciation schedule projected out?
I'm going to refer to the tax administrator for that.
Those depreciation schedules usually come from the Department of Revenue each year. So we should be receiving that shortly. We can certainly pass that along for the board to view.
Well, it seems to me that, you know, with some of those in the millions like that, that could from one year to the next really decrease a lot, so that's something we need to probably keep in mind.
If we go back and do a historical, you can see from year to year that some of them do drop, especially if they're not adding on to their building, you will see their values drop sometimes significantly from year to year because of the personal property.
And equipment also depreciates.
And is it most of that either on a seven or a ten-year depreciation schedule?
It's short.
Yes, relatively short. That's all I had.
Any other questions? There are none, again, thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
And we appreciate the, the good report. Moving on now to the second item, new business, recognize Mr. Reeves.
Thing of it, Chair, as I noted earlier, by passing out a brochure, and I just keep walking myself, I wanted to appeal to the board and ask for their let-up support to the historic preservation, Lee County Historic Preservation Council, to endorse a request to the state to add the WB Wicker school site to the Historic Preservation Register. This brochure is put out by the Department of Commerce, and as you will note, it has a picture of the WB Wicker refurbished building. And what I have in front of me is the Country Music Award that I won. Now, actually, what I have in front of me is from the Council of State Community Development Agencies, which is a national organization that recognized the WB Wicker school project as the best in the nation through a CDVG program. And this award actually belongs to the state, but I felt compelled to bring it and show it to the Lee County citizens to let you know that Kate Rumley and Brick Capital did a tremendous job, and we all ought to be very proud of it, and I hope that the board will endorse the request.
Now, I believe there was a news release concerning that also.
There was, this week, Sunday.
All right, you all make a motion that you'll be...
I would ask the board to do so.
Okay. Any further discussion? All over the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. And get with the, with our clerk and come up with what we need to do.
Thank you.
Laura, do you know the town in the middle of the brochure where it's North Carolina Main Street? Where's, where is that? Do they recognize that?
I don't, offhand, I can find out, please.
One o'clock, it might be down Goldboro.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, and I was so excited about Lee County and San Francisco.
I was, it's not a big deal, but it's kind of neat, and I just wonder where it is.
Actually, that's a very beautiful sites across the state. What is it, Little Washington, has, we've done near waterfront properties down there. It's a very worthwhile program.
Pretty neat brochure too, that we put out.
Yeah, very, very pleased to see you, Senator.
All right, moving on now, that concludes the new business. I'll have the managers report.
Ms. Mutter's going to come give the monthly financial report, and she didn't get enough with the audit.
Yeah.
She's coming back up.
Well, we're getting something current, that, the audit was fast.
Before I do start on that one, at the finance committee meeting, it was brought up that putting the presentation that I just did for you on the website is, if it's the pleasure of the full board, I would be glad to see about getting that posted on our website, if that's what y'all would like to see. The presentation that we just went through, whether or not you would like for it to be posted on our website.
The motion, we do, we give our permission to do that.
So moved.
All of you say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no, so ordered.
Most of you are permitted to answer any questions that come up about it.
Refer to the below listed name, wrong number.
At the time that the agenda went out, sales tax numbers had not been posted. They normally are posted around the tenth of the month. They did not get posted until Wednesday of last week, which was the twelfth. So I apologize for the information not being available to you in the agenda package, but it is coming around at this time. The report that was sent to you on October thir, through October thirty-first does reflect, as I noted in the agenda memo, that our property tax collections did appear to be down from last year. Normally, we run twenty-three to twenty-five percent collected through October, and through October of this year, we were only at nineteen point seven-nine. We have determined that after this went out, I was able to get with the tax department and determine that a mortgage company that paid last year, or their funds were received by us in October, were not received until November of this year, and that pretty much accounted for the differential. So with that taken into account, we probably were, we were probably aware we were this time last year. So I did want to verify that for you. We are continuing to monitor that. Two of our other large mortgage companies did pay in November, just like they have done in the past. So one of them was over a four million dollar transaction that we received last year for mortgages, property taxes. So that's good news for us. Sales tax, as I stated here, through October, we appear to be a little bit of ahead of time, but as I explained to you, we run three months behind. The numbers that are being passed around to you reflect the sales through, collections through July and August. And if you look at the second page of that document, you will see that for the same time period last year, we are down approximately four percent this year. It looks, if you look at August alone, it looks like we are way down. But if you look consistently last year, we were on a very large roller coaster. We had problems with distributions not being timed correctly or something last year. So we're a little bit more consistent so far this year. So if you look at the two months together compared to the two months last year, we are down approximately four percent. We are continuing to monitor this, the outlook. I think John's heard, Mr. Compton's heard that through this, October of this year, North Carolina's saying it's one of the worst retail sales in twenty-four years. Nationally, I know I heard over the weekend, worst retail sales in seven years. So we still got three months before we see how October truly affected us. So we are continuing to watch it, and we'll continue to monitor it, and we have put several different things in place. And I think Mr. Compton will probably be talking to you more about some other things to take place over the, in the future if things do not improve. We are continuing to see a downturn in registered deeds revenue. Even though we reduced their budget during the budget process, those revenues are still not coming in, and investment earnings continue to fall behind. That's a twofold problem, one, our cash is not coming in and we're spending out, so we don't have as much money to invest, plus investment rates are down quite a bit from last year. As far as expenditures go, we were looking at about thirty-three point three percent. We have a few departments that tend to run ahead of that. Governing bodies exceeding due to dues paid to several of organizations, those are all paid at the front of the year, so it takes a while to catch up. Juvenile detention is at fifty-four point six-four percent of the budget. This is going to be a problem, so we will be having to put some money in that lineup to cover those expenditures.
If we get a grant or some money for that program.
For juvenile detention, no, this is where we pay for juveniles who are kept in detention homes.
Oh, okay.
Okay. And that's coming from the length of some of the juveniles incarcerations and the number that we have had in incarceration over the last few months. We've got one that I think will be a long, from what I understand, is a long-term person, and that person alone, along with the others, is causing the budget to run over. Foul marshal is still over due to purchase of vehicle. Economic development continues to run over because of incentives being paid out at the front end of the year. And you will see some agencies that reflect fifty percent refund, fifty percent, those are agencies that receive their quarterly appropriations. All of you should have received a copy of the letter that Mr. Compton and I sent out to all agencies receiving funding from us, telling them the steps we are taking and what we have asked our departments to look at, and to put them on notice that they may also be receiving notifications of having to make reductions from us. So we feel that we have given them proper notification and forewarning if something else does come down the pipe. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
At budget time, some of these shortfalls were anticipated, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And not anticipated as drastic as they appear to be now?
That's correct. I think in the audit presentation, that we were seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars over budget in ad valorem collections. And we, because we budget ad valorem collections so conservatively, normally that's the case. This year, we're worried that we may not be over that much in budget, and that's normally where we get our float for our fund balance appropriated. So, you know, we're already at two point six million dollars appropriated fund balance this year. And without having that extra ad valorem revenue over budget and sales tax revenue over budget, we're looking at taking a pretty good hit on the fund balance. And as, as we, you know, showed, we are at seventeen percent of our fund balance as percent of, of our budget at this point. So we don't have a lot of room to play with, and we're getting a little concerned as, you know, we hear things. And the problem with the sales taxes, we're, we find out ninety days after the event has occurred. In ninety days, a lot could happen, so, you know, we're hearing bad things for September and October, but we won't know for thirty and sixty days what our distributions will be. At that point, you know, the new board's going to have to make a tough call as to whether to go to all funding agencies and do an across-the-board cut, or we'll just let it ride and see how, see how we work out for the year. But it's going to be tight, and next year it's going to be even tighter. Ms. Shook asked about the business real, our personal property values. We're anticipating them going down, because normally we are seeing equipment investment by businesses, and we're normally giving out incentives for that investment, and we get fifty cents on our dollar, and we're not, we're not, we have not given a lot of incentives this year. So we're anticipating that going down, we're also anticipating the vehicle values going down, as, you know, we talked about at the last meeting. So I think the economy and the issues in the economy have finally come to Lee County.
You know, Mr. Chair, I'd like to say to the board that just as the manager has cautioned all the department heads to be mindful that there may be additional cuts, I think it's equally important for those department heads to know that we don't want you to stretch it too thin or too long and get in even more trouble. Sometimes trying to make those sacrifices can cost you more in the long run because you've done more damage on the front end. So I would propose and ask this new board to always consider having a full-fledged department head meeting if we get to a point where more cuts will have to be made. You really have to hear how department heads are doing and what goes on with them, and not expect them to just make those sacrifices without having heard their case.
Likewise, you know, we're talking about, you know, things being bad on the revenue side. We still have to operate, and there are value purchasing we can do out there right now. A lot of people needing business, and it gives us the opportunity to negotiate price better these days and get some, get some better deals. So likewise, things, you know, may be good for opportunities for us, not everything's bad. So we're trying to encourage the department heads to do a better job of shopping.
I was tempted to go get a gas can when I saw the price dropped to one ninety-seven in Sanford, New York. That's, that was quite a shock, but that's an area I think we also have to look at in bulk, saving on things.
We, we did bring up property tax and all this and what's going on with property tax values. Dwayne is sending out a press release, which I hope was part of your packet today, of the additional information explaining the value of people's property and that the value can only be changed every four years during the revow. They've had several phone calls about people believing that their property values have gone down and have wanted an adjustment. But we cannot just arbitrarily adjust property in a non-revalued year, so, you know, we're obviously seeing some folks, you know, wanting to see a reduction in their taxes. That's not how that system works, and Dwayne is sending out a press release to explain how that process works and that they, they won't be able to get a re, a revow in a non-revalued year.
I think I saw in that, that if the property owner had paid for an appraisal but prior to January one of this year, is that, is that good?
Let the tax administrator explain that.
The only way that a tax value can be changed in a non-revalued, also the only way, what I was referencing in the memo, is if they, if the tax clerk can prove that our tax value is incorrect as of January first, two thousand and seven, then an adjustment may be warranted. If they come in with an appraisal of, you know, January two thousand and eight or January two thousand and nine, we can't look at that, because our, our current values reflect the January first, two thousand and seven value, and we'd be looking at a January two thousand and nine appraisal, which would be looking at two different things. But if we have a, if we have a January two thousand and seven appraisal from a bank that a tax clerk has, we can compare that with the tax value. And if there's a lot of disparity between those two, then adjustment may be warranted.
Does that have to go to the Board of V and R?
At this point, it would.
So the deadline date that they have a paid appraisal is what, December of two thousand and six is the latest it could be?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so not January of two thousand and seven?
Well, January, if they have an appraisal, January first, two thousand and seven in between, because our tax values are set January first of two thousand and seven, and they'll be revowed January first, two thousand and eleven. So between those, between two thousand and seven and two thousand and eleven, we can't adjust for market economic conditions. We can adjust if they go to an addition or add siding, things like that, but not for changes in the economy.
Okay. Any other questions?
I want to ask Dwayne one on foreclosures. Are we having any calls or inquiries regarding foreclosures on properties?
We're actually having a lot of people come in and pay without the accounts going to Zacchaeus, the law firm that we contract.
Right.
We sent out our first distribution, it's been about two or three weeks ago, I think, we sent out the first distribution to Zacchaeus. Prior to sending Zacchaeus that distribution, we sent the taxpayers one final letter, give them one final chance to pay their delinquent taxes. And we had, I think, over eighty thousand dollars in actual tax dollars coming in through that process. So it was, it was very effective. Those people were able to pay that tax money without any attorney things. That's just the tax office working diligently to get that money in. So it's been highly successful. Zacchaeus, they have filed suit on some properties at this point, so there were a lot of people that didn't come in and pay. So it's turning out to be a very effective program.
Well, that's reading your number one in the state of North Carolina.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Mr. Grubbe?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, John Payne is here. Mr. Quigman called me last week and had a concern about park security, given some recent events. So I had John come today, and he's going to give a short report on things he's doing with the Sheriff's Department and Police Department to improve security.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. Security. What we do, we have conversations with Sanford Police Department and the Sheriff's Department prior to when we have seasons to begin. Generally, from past experience, we, we know when we see certain teams or certain individuals in particular, registered programs, then warning bells go off, because, you know, we've had some issues with some folks in the past. And so what we try to do is to, is to coordinate with either the Police Department or the Sheriff's Office in having... Now, pool season, when we open up for pool season, generally, we schedule somebody for the first couple of weeks, and then we randomly have officers to come over there, just because we have to pay for that service, and it's pretty expensive. They all sat up pretty quick with the number of programs that we have. So, that's, that's pretty much what we've done. The incident that you're talking about, that, most recently, at Horton, was just unfortunate, because we have little football teams that have practiced over there all season, have not had an incident at all. We had a game scheduled with a team from Harney County that had gotten rained out. Typically, they play on Saturday mornings. The game was rained out, and so we, we had to reschedule it, and that was the only time that, that we could do it, and the only venue that we had to be able to do it in. And just unfortunate that, that we had an incident that wasn't related to the activity that we had planned out there. Any questions or anything?
Well, it was an isolated incident in a way, really away from where the group of people were and the teams and this sort of thing, but several shots were fired.
It's still unnerving when.
And they got to go somewhere, you know, something like that, yes. So...
And it could have been anywhere. It could have been in a parking lot grocery store, or Walmart, or anywhere else, you know. If something's going to happen of that nature, is going to happen regardless of where they are.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
John, on another note, are we moved into the new gymnastics facility yet?
Yes, ma'am. We've been in there since May, and right now, we're busting at the seams. Right, we were supposed to have actually moved in last January, but one thing and another, we had, the owner had to sprinkle the building before we could get moved in, and so that took a pretty good little bit to get that task done.
So, the program's filled up and...
The program is going very well. Very excited about it. The new venue, in addition to this being an Olympic year, has park symmetries, and so our classes are busting at the seams over there, so I'm delighted with that.
Well, you do have enough space.
We're using.
You can never have enough space.
We're using, we're using every square inch of it, and some of it, we have to move equipment out and then stack it up, depending on which programs that we're using. But I'm not sure you ever really have enough space in anything that you build. I mean, you're, yeah.
I heard there was a lot of interest in that.
We're loving, and especially my staff loved the space this summer, when it was 100 degrees in June, as opposed to the old building that was not air-conditioned. I mean, they were very grateful to be in a climate-controlled building.
I'll have to stop by there and see, are they open most days, or is it just evenings, or...
A couple of mornings a week, they're open till about noon, but every afternoon, there's somebody in there, and Saturday mornings even, we're in there till about noon. All right? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a couple more items, Mr. and Ms. Chairman. Handed out an 11-by-17 sheet that looks like this, revised project schedule for the Sanley Dam improvements. We've been held up by preliminary report review by the state, so we're pushing the schedule back 30 days, but we'll have final design and permitting. We're scheduled for March 1, and what they, hopefully, have plans and bid at that time. So, we're, we're getting a little bit behind by regulatory review, so that's, that's what that schedule is. Also, bringing you up to date on some items I've been discussing in the past, we're, we're starting to receive offers on the sale of property, and I met with Mr. Hall today about this, and our process is what's called the upset bid process. It's been approved by the board, so people can come in and they can give us bids on our property that we own. But we have to get a resolution passed by the board at the next meeting, advertising those offers, and then giving folks 10 days to come in and increase that bid by 10%. But we do own quite a bit of property that we would like to sell. We haven't been very successful in the past. Hopefully, we'll have some folks that are looking for bargains right now, and we can unload that. And also, at the December 1 meeting, we'll be asking the board to approve a list of personal equipment, personal property that we have in our possession, that we'd like to sell at auction on December 6. The city just held a very successful auction on their vehicles and equipment. We've been trying to sell our vehicles and equipment on eBay, have had no activity on eBay or GovDeals. So, you know, all that equipment is just accumulating over at General Services, and we need to unload. So, we'll be asking the board to approve that list, and we're accumulating it right now. And then, the last item I have is, is the schedule for December 1. We have the swearing-in ceremony at the old courthouse at 8:30. We'll have a reception in the new courthouse to follow, and then the regular meeting will start back here at 10:00. That's our plan for December 1. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Passacles. Juk.
Not today.
Just one thing, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to thank everyone that came out to vote. I know this, this is something I just wanted to say publicly. I appreciate all the support that I've received from everyone throughout the campaign. The candidates ran great campaigns. They were clean. There was a lot accomplished by this board in the last eight years, and I have been humbled and have had a pleasure of serving with great people throughout this county and on this board. And I just want to thank them again for all the hard work they've done and for all the things they've have gotten done. You got the Country Music Award there.
That wasn't me playing.
You have anything else?
No, no, sir.
Anything from the bar end?
It's you.
Maybe it's talking to you.
I would just like to thank Mr. Quigley, Mr. Brown, and Mr. Lamond for working with the staff, and appreciate all the support that y'all have given us, and I especially like to thank Mr. Brown and Mr. Lamond for being part of the group that hired me, and thank you for this opportunity, and enjoyed working with them.
Mr. Doyle? Well, I'll entertain a motion that we go into closed session. All those favors say aye. So, we'll leave in the small conference room in 10 minutes.